Hey, it's party time on Welcome to another episode Thursday off the rails episode. We'll see how far off we go today. I got some serious things I want to talk about. We'll get into it later on. Another episode of the Chad Prather Show. We're in the mothership studio 22. The, did you hear me on Glenn Beck this morning? I thought I was good. I thought I was just fantastic. We were talking, of course, about the book, Am I Crazy? I walked into the studio this morning and I said, Glenn, stop defending Greg Abbott. He said, if only there was someone else running. By the way, I said, I hate you, old man.
All I want to say that was pretty ballsy of you to bring up that you're running for governor on the Glenn Beck program.
Uh huh, absolutely.
So, good for you.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, everybody knows it. Glenn knows it. They just don't want to talk about it. And it's just, it's just how it is. You know, and listen, when I started running for governor, everybody was waiting for the punchline, right? And then you have people who are still kind of waiting for the punchline. They think this is some kind of opportunistic thing. No, I need your help. Like, we are legitimately running. As soon as I jump out of the studio, I'm headed to Lano, Texas, Buchanan Dam, to be specific. That's about four hours away. I have two nails in my back driver's side tire. I have put plugs in the front tire. I am running, literally running the wheels off of my truck, crisscrossing Texas. I don't have a private jet. I don't have a bus. I don't, you know, I don't have any of that stuff that we're using for this campaign because we, well, we need money. Prather 2022.com, quite honestly, I'm making an appeal. If you want me to stay in this race, we are running on fumes. Man, I'm out there and I'm serious and I'm highly motivated. And more and more, man, we have got such a target on our back. This is what I was talking about with Glenn this morning. The Washington DC, the federal government has put a target on the back of Texas. They want us to be like California, New York, Illinois. They want us to be blue, not even purple anymore. They just want us to be blue. And, you know, we already have, all of our cities are blue. So, so goes Texas. So goes the rest of the nation. This matters. So, no matter where you are, if you're listening to this show, donate, donate to, and understand something, folks, just so you know, and I assume a lot of things that I think is common knowledge. I don't touch the money, right? People say, oh, you're just getting rich. No, no, I, like, there's an ethics commission. I don't touch the money. We run a campaign, but it does take money to run that. So, I'm asking for your help. Prather 2022.com. And every dollar helps us get up and down the road. And man, I'll tell you what, I was at an event the other day, and I spoke to these people, several hundred people there. And I said, you may not vote for me, but I guarantee you, I've touched your soul talking about Texas tonight. Every head in there was nodding because they knew the things that I said. I lit a fire in those people. So, I appreciate Glenn for having me on the show. Hopefully, we'll go back on there soon. The book, Am I Crazy? Which I've started calling it, Chris, I've started calling it a common sense guide to the end of the world.
I like that.
This is, this is, you know, we talk about an unapologetic patriot takes on the insanity of today's woke world. Well, wokeism is the religion that has taken over our culture and taken over our minds. It's really taken over a generation. And that downward spiral has to be navigated. So, this book kind of gives you the common sense answers of how to engage in that conversation, how to engage in that dialogue, and win the cultural battle. This, this thing, like, you know, wokeism has now attacked so much of what we do. Like, it's affected how we raise our kids. It's affected how we, you know, the education system, our judicial system. It's affected our marriages, how we go to work, how we keep our jobs, how we go about our day to day, how we interact on social media, cancel culture, how we enjoy live shows, all these various and different things. So, I'm encouraging you, get the book. You can get it now. Am I crazy? You can get it wherever books are offered, but you can also get it at my website, watchchad.com. Right now, there's a limited quantity of pre-signed. I spent some time yesterday at the warehouse signing these, these books. And don't worry, if you bought one already and it comes in and you don't have a signed copy, a lot of people are going to say, oh, I should have waited. No, no, no. We have these things called book plates. All right, the book plate has my picture on there and it's got, am I crazy? And it's a sticker, right? It's like, it's like a postcard sticker. I'll sign it, get it sent to you, and you just stick it right there in the inside cover. And it looks like it's part of the book. It's really a beautiful thing. So, I'm encouraging folks. And the other thing that I think is important about getting this book is, and trust me, people say, oh, you just want to make money. All right, let me explain something to you. You don't make money off of writing books. That, there's no money in it, right? Unless you're, you know, some dude that's selling, you know, millions and trillions of books. I mean, they, you know, Mark Levin, his new book's American Marxist, he sold a million copies. That's unheard of in the book industry.
In today's world?
In today's world.
Yeah, that's like,
That's a lot.
That's like triple platinum right there.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, that's Michael Jackson numbers in music.
Exactly. 100%.
People just don't do that. And so, what I'm encouraging people to do is let's get conservative voices, common sense voices, people you agree with on that bestseller list. And that, what that does is it tells the world. It tells the world that, hey, we're still here and we still support our own. We still get our voices out there. So, I want to encourage people, get this, get this book and help us get there. I promise you, you don't get rich off of writing books. That, this was a labor of love. This was not something that we did as a money grab. I assure you of that. A lot of blood, sweat and tears and paper cuts. And Saturday morning, Blaze TV's Rick and Bubba University gonna be on there. Those of you in the deep south, y'all know Rick and Bubba, Rick and Bubba. We just finished recording that. Listen to their podcast on Saturday morning. We're gonna talk about all things wokeness and craziness going on in our cultural, culture here in America. Hey, did you know that an okay credit score can cost you 100 grand over the life of a 30-year home loan? That's why you should use Score Master before you apply for any loan. Score Master can take your credit score from okay to great and do it very fast. The average user adds 61 points in 20 days or less. Recent COVID surges will keep interest rates low for now, and adding 61 points to your score could save you thousands on a home loan. But those rates are going to go up soon. So, before you apply, visit scoremaster.com and add points to your credit score fast. Then you can maintain and protect your credit score with 24/7 credit monitoring and $1 million fraud insurance. It only takes minutes to enroll. And you'll see your points, get more points, you'll qualify for the lowest loan rates. Go to scoremaster.com/chad, scoremaster.com/chad to get started today. We'll be right back. Man, I'll tell you what, going crazy here. Chicago gang members released without charges after deadly shootout, in part because they were mutual combatants who willingly fought each other. Listen, this is like, I keep saying, let's bring back duels. Okay? Let's just bring back duels. Like, people would not be nearly as offended anymore if you could just walk up, slap somebody in the face with a leather glove, and then say pistols at dawn. They'd be like, no, bro, I didn't mean that. I didn't mean to come at you so hard on Instagram. But yeah, they were, they were released from custody. One of them being first degree murder because of the five arrestees. They were mutual combatants and willingly fought with each other. It was a gunfight, folks, a gunfight. And these guys, they just said, well, they were all in it together. So, this reminds me of the, what's it, what is it? Anchorman? You know, Will Ferrell movie, where they, all the, the feuding news anchors, they get together and have that big gang fight, and they're all just disemboweling each other and everything. I mean, I laugh. It's not funny. But, but it's true. Like, this is where we're at. The gangs get together, they have a gunfight, they go crazy, they get nuts. And this, this, just absolute insanity. This is the world we're living in. No charges against the mutual combatants. I mean, this, this kind of thing is just dumb. And then Sage Steele, you remember Sage Steele? She kind of got into that whole thing, you know, being all wokey woke and all that stuff. And she was the ESPN host. Remember that? And now, she has issued a public apology for criticizing Disney's vaccine mandate on a podcast after reportedly being removed from the air Tuesday. So, she's the one who, who went out, she was on Jay Cutler's podcast, you know, can't make it as quarterback, have a podcast. Said she didn't want to get vaccinated against COVID-19 and only did so because of the company's quote, sick and scary mandate. She said, I worked for a company that mandates it, and I had until September 30th to get it done, or I'm out. I respect everyone's decision, I really do. But to mandate it is sick and it's scary to me in many ways. And her remarks contradicted the position of a federal government, which through the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention maintains that COVID-19 vaccines are safe and effective. That's right, folks. We've said it right here. They're safe and effective. Blah, blah, blah. Just remember, they're safe and affected, effective, affected, maybe. So, anyway, she got reprimanded. She got taken, she got taken off the air and boom, there it is. There it is. Got to apologize, or you're gonna get canceled. I just, see, that's why I built a whole brand. I keep telling everybody, like, I built a whole brand called unapologetic. Because stop apologizing. I know you gotta pay the bills, right? And I have people who keep sending me these messages going, what do we do? We're gonna lose our jobs? And all the, like, how are we gonna, I know, I know, I know, I know. But do you see the problem? We've allowed ourselves to get under the thumb of everybody from the lenders, to the money holders, to the media, to the courts, to the judicial systems of the federal government, the state governments, the local municipalities. And now, you can't even go in as a parent and face the school board anymore and criticize things like critical race theory and, and try to hold their feet to the fire and keep them accountable without being labeled a domestic terrorist. This is the kind of insanity that we're living in, folks. Our rights to free speech and free action are being limited in a massive way. And this is what's happened. We've allowed ourselves to get here. And now, we're sitting here going, what do I do? What do I do? We've gotten so governmentally dependent that we can't, we can't do anything for ourselves. I've been saying this for years. And I know I use that phrase over and over again, but I've been saying this for years, that even as conservatives, we haven't been about small government. We haven't conserved anything. We've allowed the government to get so big that we're just as dependent on the government. Like, we talk about people on welfare and people who have made a lifestyle out of welfare. We talk about all these folks. And they say, we say, hey, you know, these people that are governmentally dependent, they're the ones who are bringing the rest of the country down. And the government just want to keep you on the tit, right? Just want to keep you dependent on them. And I'm like, we as conservatives are doing no better. And now, we're seeing the full results of this. What am I gonna do? I'm gonna lose my job. I've had this job for 20 years. I mean, I've got my retirement there. Well, you let government get too big. You let the government get too big. I was talking with a good friend of mine, you know, well, I'll tell you, even closer to home, Allison, everybody knows Allison. You know, yesterday, they came out where they're going to ban all travel into Canada for people that are unblabbed. If you haven't had the blah blah, you can't go to Canada. Well, Allison's Canadian. She's got elderly parents that live in Calgary. She would love to go visit her parents. Now, guess what? Can't do it. Can't do it. And I know there are the bleeding hearts out there that say, oh, just go get that safe and effective blah blah, so you can go see your parents. The issue isn't the blah blah. The issue is not about the blah blah. The issue is that you're being made to get the blah blah. You can't function in day-to-day life. You can't travel. You can't go anywhere. You can't transact. You can't do business. You can't have a job. You can't get paid. You can't even get surgery done now unless you've had the blah blah. So, this is tyranny at its finest, folks. Heard the story the other day, the lady who was waiting on a kidney transplant. And the kidney comes in, they find a match. It's time to do the surgery. Have you had the blah blah? No. Are you willing to get the blah blah? No. Okay, well, we're gonna bypass you for this kidney. That is tyranny, folks. You either get the medical procedure, or your rights are forfeited. That's a bunch of nonsense. It's crazy. To think that we live in the kind of world that demands you get a medical procedure. That's why I'm not gonna go out and do live shows. We canceled our shows months ago. We were gonna do coast to coast in Canada. We were gonna do eight shows across the country. Canceled every one of them because I'm not gonna go in there, one, and you have to get the blah blah. But I'm also not gonna quarantine for 14 days because I came in from the United States of America and went into this socialist Marxist, Justin Trudeau country called Canada. And God bless you guys, especially, ah, those of you in Alberta. I feel bad for you because I love Alberta, man. I do. It's Texas of the north, and I love you guys up there. Calgary and Banff and Lake Louise, all that, some of my favorite places on the planet. And I don't know I'll ever get to see them again, right? This is tyranny, folks. And God bless Allison. Pray for her, pray for her family. She'd love to see her family. It's a bad deal. But this is what's happening, folks. We've let government get too big. You can't speak out. They'll come and arrest you in your homes for going to a school board meeting and speaking out. Yeah, they will. It just happened in Round Rock, Texas. We have a story that just came out two weeks ago. Many of you are familiar with it, where, you know, parents go to the school board and they want to speak out against what their children are being indoctrinated with in this thing called education. It's not education at all. It's indoctrination. It's brainwashing. It's, it's, it's humanistic philosophy parading itself around as knowledge, and it's not. And you got a school board president who's going to tell the police who to go arrest and who to apprehend and who to withhold and who to, who to roadblock from getting into these meetings, folks. Tyranny at its finest. So, I want us to, I want us to get away from that. I want us to get away from that. I want us to get back to being independent. Well, how do we do that? Well, for some of us, folks, it's going to take us to stop being lazy, use our voices, and allow ourselves to be canceled, allow ourselves to be threatened, allow ourselves to be persecuted. We may have to engage in some civil disobedience. You ever heard of civil disobedience? You know, those of you who, who, who looked back on the 60s and the civil rights movement, Martin Luther King Jr., and the things they did and thought of those as afterthoughts and footnotes of history? No. What they did in their nonviolent, civil disobedient protest were very, very effective. They got a lot of people's attention. They disrupted things. And their disruptions affected a very positive change. So, you know, let's say you have a restaurant that demands that you get the blah blah before you come and eat. You must show proof of the blah blah. You know what we do? We go out there, we lock arms and we surround that restaurant. We don't let people come in. You say, well, they'll arrest you for that. Well, that's exactly right. Because that's what it's going to come to. Civil disobedience is going to lead to persecution. At what point in time, when you were reading your bibles, and they talked about those of you who stand for righteousness are going to be persecuted? At what point in time did you think those were just words that sounded good and rolled off of your tongue in a multi-syllable format when you were chanting them in your liturgies in church? When you were saying them in your quiet times? No, you are going to be persecuted. You are going to experience tribulation. People say, is this the end of the world? Well, yeah, it is for you and me because we're all terminal. Everybody is the last generation for themselves. This is it, folks. You get one life and then you die. What are you gonna live for? What are you gonna die for? You know, I used to think in my head, if somebody came in there and in the name of righteousness, held a gun out and said, you know, who's willing to die for what you believe in? Who's willing to live for what you believe in? This is the thing that I'm saying, that we have got to get back to a point that something is worth bleeding for, something is worth dying for. You know, Patrick Henry, who said, give me liberty or give me death. At what point in time do you find that threshold where you're willing to make the sacrifice? When you're willing to take the stand? When you're willing to lose your reputation? When you're willing to lose your livelihood and your goods? Don't send me letters. Don't send me the letters. You know the right things to do. There is no silver bullet here. The werewolf is at your door. There is nothing that's going to save you from this debacle that we've allowed ourselves to get into. We conservatives allowed government to get so big that now it's a monster that can't be controlled. You know, the, the image of the blob just oozing out of the theater and just, just engulfing everything that's there and everything that engulfs, it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. This is the consumption of the government. And let me tell you something, no matter what the government, whatever Big Brother advocates for, I'm suspicious of that. I don't trust it. I don't believe in it because there's an agenda behind it. They're not out for your best interest. They want to dictate to you. They want you to bow to them because they know that you are the one, you, you are the fuel for the machine. They want to, to put their boot on your neck because you're, you are what empowers and even funds their, their exploitations. So, no, the government doesn't love you. If you think the government loves you, stop paying them and see what happens. Show up at your school board meeting and speak out against the things that they are advocating. They've made these ideologies into a political stance. Ted Cruz, just yesterday, was questioning the person that is, you know, she has an authority when it comes to these issues, things such as these folks that are being labeled domestic terrorists for speaking out at school boards. He said, do you really believe in labeling them domestic terrorists? And she said, I don't. Well, then why are we having that conversation? Why is that kind of language and verbiage and semantics being tossed around? He said, what about Antifa? And she said, well, I don't consider, you know, you know, didn't really, gave a blah blah answer. And then says, well, what about BLM, the people who burned down the buildings, the ones who murdered police officers, the ones who persecuted people in the streets? And she says, well, you know, I'm not going to judge these different ideologies. Different ideologies. They're burning down communities. They're murdering people in the name of activism, which is nothing more than an ideology that is being crammed down your throat with an agenda. But yet, you go to your school board and you speak out, and guess what? They come and arrest you in the night. You said, that doesn't happen. It happens. It happened right here in Texas two weeks ago. It's happening, folks. This is Texas. This isn't California. This isn't Illinois. This isn't Chicago. You know, I read the article a minute ago. You know, they're gonna have, they're gonna release this, these folks that are charged of manslaughter because the gangs have a fight out in the street. And they're gonna say, oh, well, it was just mutual combatants. Or they're, you know, somebody's gonna speak out and say, I don't want my company to give, to force me to have the blah blah. I think that's sick and twisted. And they said, well, you know what? We're gonna, you're gonna lose your job. And now Sage Steele has to come out and apologize because of what she said, because of her convictions. Your opinions be damned. You can't have opinions anymore. Two plus two equals five. You remember that in 1984? And they, and they, he says, oh, no, I believe it. Two plus two is five. And they said, no, you don't believe it. They're going to make you believe that two plus two is five. That's where we're at, folks. That's where we're at. So, at what cost are you willing to stand up? We're gonna talk about that. I'm gonna show you a very practical, real-life example of everything I'm saying in the next segment. You don't want to go away. You want to pay attention to this story. A few decades ago, private citizens used to be largely just that, private. What's changed? The internet. Think about everything you've browsed, searched for, watched, or tweeted. Now, imagine all of that data being crawled through, collected and aggregated by third parties into a permanent public record. Your record, having your private life exposed for others to see, was once something only celebrities worried about. But in an era where everyone is online, everyone is a public figure. To keep my data private, when I go online, I turn to ExpressVPN. Did you know there's hundreds of data brokers out there who sold businesses to buy and sell your data? The worst part is they don't have to tell you who they're selling it to or get your consent. One of these data points is your IP address. Data harvesters use your IP to uniquely identify you and your location. But with ExpressVPN, your connection gets rerouted through an encrypted server and your IP address is masked. So, every time you turn on ExpressVPN, listen, they give you a random IP address that's shared by other ExpressVPN customers. And that makes it more difficult for third parties to identify you and harvest your data. The best part is how easy ExpressVPN is to use. No matter what device you're on, laptop, phone, TV, smart TV, all you have to do is tap one button and you're gonna get protected. So, if you, like me, believe that your data is in your business, is, you know, you want to secure yourself, folks, with the number one rated VPN on the market, visit expressvpn.com/watchchad. Get three extra months for free. That's expressvpn.com/watchchad. Go there and learn more. We'll be right back. So, for those of you who don't believe me, trust me, it's happening. And it's happening right here in Texas. Joining me in the hot seat, my friend Jeremy's story. Jeremy's got one heck of a story. This is what happened to him. And, and rather than me getting into asking you the minute details of this, because there are legal ramifications to this, and I want to respect that, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, let's, take me back a couple of weeks, Round Rock, Texas. Tell me what happened. What started this debacle that you're going through right now?
Yes. I mean, ultimately, what started it was back in June. I was sitting in a board meeting and for the school board for Round Rock ISD, which is a suburb of Austin, Texas. And I watched the school board, or five members of the school board out of the seven, basically violate, look like they violated, and it was very clear to me that they violated the Texas Open Meetings Act by hiring a new superintendent with premeditated plans outside the board meeting. Because right after they voted, after many members of the public had said, please, could you just vet this superintendent a little more? Because there's a couple of concerns. And one of the concerns was that superintendent in his former district was using police force to silence people. And so, people were saying, look, maybe he's a great guy, but just vet him for a week or two. Can you do that? It's an important decision. And they basically just said, nope. And they voted him in. And it seems so weird that they would take such a risk. You know, why not wait a week? And then, right after they voted him in in that meeting, this is what I was sitting there inside the board meeting watching, I looked behind me, and they pulled this guy out of the back room. And they say, oh, we have him with us here today. He drove six hours to be here. And they had him, you know, had a video released within seconds. And I realized they had coordinated this before the vote had actually occurred. And two board members who voted no were obviously surprised from the dais. And were saying things like, is this on the agenda? We didn't know he was here in the back room.
This is the, this, the proposed superintendent.
Right, right. But now, he is the superintendent by a matter of seconds. And they had had him in the back room the whole time and pulled him out unbeknownst to several of the board members. Clearly, there was an advanced plan, and I knew there was a problem. And that is what precipitated me getting involved and speaking out about it.
Yeah. So, so they railroaded this guy in there, obviously. They don't do a vetting process. The guy has a track record of using the police force to, to basically Stalin-esque style enforce what he wants. This is the kind of thing that I'm talking about, when you create these little dictators, right? And they're gonna use whatever resources they have, especially law enforcement when they can, to enforce their, their edicts and their dictums. This is what you get. So, what happened next?
Well, I thought it couldn't get worse, but it has gotten much worse. And what, what happened, in short, is that I was contacted by several people, including the now victim herself, that basically told me that there was a woman who had been assaulted by the superintendent, who was his mistress.
Wow.
That he'd had a long, about a three or four-year relationship with, that he'd been lying to, saying he wasn't married, and she found out. But also, she got pregnant right after he was hired by the school board. She, this is what the victim alleges. And I've looked at her evidence and I find it very, very credible. The victim herself is extremely credible. She's a high-level educator in the Austin area, very respected across the country, across the state. And, and so, she was basically saying that she'd had this relationship with him, had told him that she was pregnant shortly after he got hired by Round Rock School District, that he had responded to her, basically telling her to get an abortion. She had said, no, I don't want to do that because she's a woman of faith. She's a Hispanic lady of faith. And she's, she realized this guy's got problems now. And she says, I don't want to do that. He then basically threatens her and says, if you don't go get an abortion, you're gonna ruin my career. And so, I'm gonna come after you, and I'm gonna take care of you and the kid. So, basically, he tells her indirectly that he's going to abort his own child, right? And she's telling me this on the, you know, as we're, as we're speaking. And I'm, other people are collaborating. I see phone records are collaborating, and text messages are collaborating. I do independent research to find out other things that collaborated. And I find that I'm one of the only people in the district that probably knows. And I was faced with the decision of, do I just be quiet about this? And it also uncovered evidence that the board probably knew some things about this. And so, do I just be quiet or do I speak up? And I chose to speak up. And in essence, I messaged the board privately. See, I didn't want to make it, I wanted to give them an opportunity to do the right thing. And so, I privately messaged the board. And basically, in summary, they ignored me, except for two board members, Danielle Bone and Mary Weston. But the other five doubled down and basically ignored me, said that they didn't need to talk to me. This wasn't an issue or whatever. You know, different, different types of responses, basically that. I then messaged them again, same thing. So, I wrote a second letter basically calling for their resignation, all five of them. And also calling, because in the meantime, they issued a public statement saying they didn't know anything about this. But what I had found out is that the victim had messaged the school board before the actual alleged assault. And had told them, look, there's an issue here. There's a problem. I'm concerned. This guy's threatening me, these sorts of things. And they did nothing. And instead, what they did is a few of them, it seems, somehow notified the superintendent. That's what the victim is alleging. And that's what she's trying to state with her proof. And that through that, shortly right after that, the superintendent was notified of the whistleblower, in essence, the now victim. He then went to her house, according to her, and she allowed him in, because that was maybe a poor decision of her part, but she allowed him in, trying to reconcile, whatever. And then he assaulted her.
Wow.
And, and threw her to the ground, shook her, tried to steal some things from her, and, and then left. And she took a fake apology from him because she was afraid that he was gonna hurt her. So, she made him believe that he was, he was forgiven or whatever. And once he left, then she, of course, filed a police report and got a, and now has a protective order against him.
And this is the superintendent?
This is the superintendent of our school district, has a protective order. That, you know, at this point, I'm looking at it, I'm going, wow, I can see the protective order. It gets served to him. I go in the building when I, when it, when it's getting served, and I film, and the administrators in the building act like they don't know what's going on. When meanwhile, I know the cops are in the back room serving him a protective order. And so, the board still is denying this even exists at this point. And so, I continued to call them out and continue to say, except for those two board members, but the other five are hear no evil, see no evil sort of thing. And I began to call them out and show them evidence. Totally ignored me. So, when I realized that they were not going to take basically any reason, it seemed like to me, to take any action. And they were actually also keeping it off the agenda. And they were actually also keeping it off the agenda so that the other two board members could not bring it up, right? Because they had enough votes to try to do that. And so as a result, I then went public. I went public to social media because I was left with no other option because of the board's own, I would say negligence in my mind, in my personal opinion. I'm not a lawyer. And so I did that and then I decided I would go to a school board meeting and begin to speak about it. When I did that, and I went to the school board meeting and signed up to speak and was called to the front to, by the board president, whose name is Amy Weir. She called me up, but before I got to the stand, there'd been a lot of parents testifying that night, a lot. I mean, there were tons more than normal because there was a debate, Round Rock ISD, the same Amy Weir that I'm talking about, and it's those same five board members had decided they wanted to thwart the governor's order and implement a mass mandate in our district and just say, well, sue us, you know? So that's what was going on in the middle of all this. And I think to some degree it was a smokescreen, right? To get away from an even more serious issue going on in their midst. So I went into that meeting and they were debating a resolution about how public safety was important, student safety was important. 90% of the resolution was all about safety of students, teachers, everybody. And it also talked about the need to oversee the superintendent. So it was a mile wide door that they gave me to relevantly talk about that resolution and then use the example of the superintendent sitting right next to them that they were ignoring that was a public safety threat and that they needed to be overseeing, right?
Yeah.
So I went into the board meeting. As I walked up to the board, I was treated completely different than all those other parents had been. The first thing happened is Amy Weir, before I got to the stand to begin to share, said, I hear you're going to speak about something that's not on the agenda. Now, I had said nothing at this point, nothing. I hadn't even gotten to the microphone. And she said, you can't do that. And so I finally got to the microphone and I said, Ms. Weir, would you be willing to hear me out as to why this is absolutely germane to the resolution at hand? And she says, no, right in front of everybody.
Hang on one second. I want to hear this. I want to hear this. This is good stuff, but I want to hold that thought, okay? Because we're going to take a quick break. We're at the, we're at the school board meeting and you're already, your free speech is already being silenced. You're being censored by the school board. Hang on one second. It's almost time to start thinking about the holidays and the first item on your list needs to be iTarget Pro. This revolutionary system allows you to dry fire practice with your actual firearm in the comfort, safety and privacy of your own home. In other words, without old Joe sniffing over your shoulder, you don't have to go out in public and do any of these things. The cost of ammo is through the roof. This gives law abiding gun owners a better way to train regularly. You don't have to make any inconvenient trips to the range or spend money on expensive practice ammunition. Just download iTarget's proprietary app, load the laser bullet, yeah, I said it, into your firearm and start your training experience right there at home. Dry fire training is going to help you develop that muscle memory, sharpen your target reaction speed, sight alignment, trigger function, a whole lot more. iTarget Pro comes in all the major calibers, including 223. You can use it in your AR so you stay sharp with any firearm you own. Go to itargetpro.com, save 10% plus get free shipping with offer code CHAD, I spell it, Chad. Smartest way for you to practice and it pays for itself in one day. That's the letter I, targetpro.com. Itargetpro.com, use offer code Chad. We'll be right back. You're at the board meeting, you're already being silenced. What happens?
So basically I begin to speak. She lets me speak for a brief period of time until I actually start to mention, and I detail the resolution, I start to mention the superintendent. I get about two words out and she starts banging her gavel and screaming and saying, that's inappropriate, you can't say that. And next thing I know, two cops are coming from behind me, grabbing by my arms, dragging me out of the board meeting, down the hall, through the cafeteria and pushing me out the front door. And then I don't hear anything for a month, for a month. Meanwhile, in the next couple of board meetings, the board decides to begin to limit more and more the number of chairs in the boardroom. It's a 375 person boardroom. They decide to pull all those chairs out except for 18. And they tell you that you can only sit in those 18 and if you bring your own chair or lean against the wall, they will take you out of the boardroom. And so I believe that was to limit the speech and for people to be able to not hear this story. So what happens is a month later, I get arrested at my home. And so does another citizen who's, I'm a minister. I work all over the country. The college campuses have for about 30 years, served on a bunch of national faith boards. And this other gentleman was a veteran, army captain. We were simultaneously arrested at our homes, me a month after this incident, for this incident. So I was arrested for being drug out by the board president and put in jail. And we were arrested in such a way that they, they did it at about five o'clock so they could hold us overnight, we believe, in a punitive way in the jail. So we were put in jail for speaking the truth at a board meeting.
Which obviously that is a tactic of, you know, it's wrong on so many levels, but this is a way to basically say, hey, this, we're threatening you. This is, we're going to silence you. This is, we're going to make sure that you get the ultimate in the intimidation factor.
Yeah, yeah. And in fact, even my family felt threatened because when the police came to our door, you know, they threatened to arrest one of my kids, you know, for harboring me, you know? And of course, our lawyer said, that's totally bogus. They were just trying to get me out of the house so that they could simultaneously arrest this other gentleman and me at his home and me at mine. Yeah, and so what we found is that the arrest has, the affidavit is full of holes. It's not true. All of this was taped, every last bit of what I told you. And the affidavit does not match the video whatsoever. Our lawyer says, you know, there is no way any reasonable prosecutor would try to even consider this in a normal situation. And the only reason why it's sitting there is because of the political nature of it. And because it's just totally, they had no authority, these school police officers, to drag me out of the room, much less the authority to arrest me because of what they did. They're actually the ones in the wrong. They're the ones that actually, you know, should be having criminal charges filed against them and civil charges filed against them, not vice versa. And this is a punitive move in order to be defensive and to make up things.
So we have a board that's in charge of the education of our children. You have evidence that the superintendent, who's obviously railroaded in on a bogus process, has some illicit nature of his personal life that's going on. There's all of these accusations that are alleged. That's one thing. You come in there, you're trying to point this out and the school board, which has done all of these things up to this point, overstepped their reach and their authority and they actually basically dispatched law enforcement to come get you.
Their own police force, actually, because it was the district police that's controlled by the superintendent, who actually carried me out of the room. And it was the district police force that filed the affidavit that then they used to arrest me. So it's actually a little private, I would call it, like it feels like a little private police force run by a citizen. The superintendent is who they report to.
Interesting. It's almost like there's things in history that that sounds like, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And that's what we're facing right now, you know? And they've even made special exceptions to put us in the jail because the jail had a COVID policy that said our level of offense was not to be put in jail. There were other people who were turned away with similar, not exact same offense, but similar level, that were said, you cannot be here because we have a COVID policy that we do not, so a special exception was made for us so that we could be put in jail overnight, simply because we were speaking the truth. Other things are going on. The TEA is investigating the district. They've already come out with that, it's public. They've appointed a monitor to the district. They're probably going to upgrade that to a conservator, which is when the TA wants to step things up, they go another level. The district has an F rating financially. They've lost 3,000 students. So now they have a $30 million deficit that they were surprised about this year because there's a flight out of the district. And it's for these reasons, because the board is doing crazy things, I believe. You know, like everything from, you know, thwarting the governor's order to, in this case, covering up what I feel to be very significant allegations against the superintendent, hiring said superintendent by violating the Texas Open Meetings Act, and then topping it off by reducing the board meeting down to 18 chairs in a big auditorium and putting police officers to the front door to block out parents from getting in.
This is the kind of stuff you think is only in these movies of like the worst case scenarios of what could happen in your little community, right?
Right.
Like they think, well, let's write this story that's so far fetched, it would never happen in America, much less in Texas, much less around the capital of Texas. Oh, Jeremy, 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 Jeremy. And I know there's a whole lot more. I know there's a whole lot more. I know. It's seedy, it's dirty. I know, you know, I mean, I know things. And again, I, you know, I shared, I've shared this story over and over again, yours. There was the video of them taking you out, manhandling you. I mean, this force that was unnecessary. And then my friend Weston Martinez, who's running for land commissioner in Texas, he of course sent a message, did a video on YouTube and was texting me about when you were arrested, like the night of. I was, I can remember where I was. I was in my truck. I got it. I immediately went to Twitter and shared it in different places that I could to make it, make people aware of this. Well, I, you know, I, it's just, and that's why the other night I saw you and I was like, you gotta come on the show. You gotta come and let's talk about this. Because I think people think that we are doing this recreationally, like we're saying these things for our own, you know, just to get things off our chest and create these nightmares that people can fear so we can sell more food preparedness or something. But this is real life. This is Texas. This isn't, this isn't San Francisco.
And that's so important, what you were saying, absolutely what you said, even in the former segment, what you said is so true. You know, Round Rock is not some small town somewhere, you know, you don't know about. Round Rock is a suburb of Austin, a major area.